Dealing with COVID. The meeting is being recorded, for those of you who weren't aware. The, again, we are still dealing with COVID, so we worked on the three-foot spacing. The restroom is still available. We'll go as quickly as we can, but I would remind everyone to please try and stay in your seats. Want to remind everyone that a free and open discussion with respect to all viewpoints. We are all always going to be friends and neighbors, and if it's important to your friend or neighbor to come forward, they should be heard with respect and courtesy. All questions must be addressed through the moderator. Please keep all questions and discussion on point. The question may be moved by the moderator or by a motion of those in attendance or anywhere at the moderator's discussion. Please come to the microphone if you wish to make a presentation of anything of duration, and this is important because it's important for the town clerk to be able to hear and it works it into the record. Again, as a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. One last housekeeping item when we'll get started. Question two tonight is a secret ballot question. So when you came in, you were given your regular voter card, and you were given a perforated piece of paper with yes/no on it. And when we reach question two and get through the article and the debate, we will then go by rows, just like church. We'll start in the front, when the row returns, the next row will come. We'll have two folks counting. Your ballots will go in the first box, your discards will go in the second box. We will continue the meeting while Mr. Patullo and Mr. Shares do the count, and at such time they are done, they will let us know the total and whether or not we achieve the two-thirds majority required. We'll go over it one more time real quick when we get there, and obviously if we have any questions, we're going to be ready to answer them when we get to the secret ballot. That said, the first question, Article One, purchase of a police cruiser. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Carol, you always do, and I completely go through it. The advisory would like to offer some background for the meeting tonight.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carol Fitzgerald, co-chair of the advisory committee. Wanted to just give you a bit of an overview of our financial position before we head into the articles. As of tonight, our stabilization account balance is $1,264,000. That's the town's long-term savings account. Free cash has been certified at $1,113,937. The free cash is our excess revenue over the expenses from the prior fiscal year that's been certified by the Commonwealth and are available to spend. These funds are already raised and appropriated, so any expenditures from free cash will not affect the tax rate calculation. That's why you'll hear in the motions the language "transfer from available funds" as opposed to "raise and appropriate," which you generally hear at annual town meetings. Tonight, we'll be making recommendations to apply free cash to the articles requiring financial investments, as well as applying some of these funds toward our stabilization account and to offset or mitigate the upcoming tax rate calculation that occurs in December. And we're making these recommendations based on input from and discussion with the town accountant, the town treasurer, and the board of selectmen. So assuming that all of the articles, the financial articles are approved tonight, we anticipate that the net effect will be a $174,311 reduction in an appropriation to the police department, which is based on savings from the dispatch decision offset by a recently signed police contract, be a $86,123 reduction in appropriation to the school assessment due to overage of their E&amp;D account. We would use 511, $511,216 from free cash. We'll put $378,844 into stabilization, and we'll apply $223,877 to reduce the tax rate. And based on all of this, we believe that the net effect will be about a 1% increase in the average tax bill, which is substantially lower than increases we've had in the last several years. And we think that this will allow us to continue to meet our current financial needs and obligations of the town and prepare us for some potential challenging times ahead as well.
First and foremost, thank you to the advisory committee. They do tremendous work on all of our behalf, and second of all, please forgive me for skipping over. We specifically discussed your presentation. You have another one that you want to address, so I'll make sure I get that one right. Okay, Article One, to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to purchase a new police cruiser or take any other action relative thereto. Motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $53,000 from unappropriated available funds to the police department for the purchase of a new police cruiser.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a motion and a second. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any discussion on the question? We have one question.
When was the last police cruiser?
I'm sorry, could you state your name and street for the record, please?
We've been to Rickert County, New York. When was the last cruiser purchased?
At the annual town meetings.
So, line three now? Or two now?
Yes, five.
Well, I mean, how many did we get? One now?
One, one. So we have four, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong. We have four, what you would call patrol vehicles. The average mileage on these is in the 70, 80,000 mile range. At the time, we'll be able to get these cruisers, and there's a tremendous delay in getting new cars right now. Both vehicles that are being replaced will be over 100,000 miles, and that's not very efficient. The maintenance costs go way up. The vehicles in the winter will not be what they need to do. We have a mobile police department. They need to be able to respond, get to your house, and help you, and we need the appropriate vehicles for that.
Any other questions? Say no other questions or discussions. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, are there any opposed? The vote carries. Article Two, and this is where you will need the cards that we talked about a minute ago. Article Two, municipal light plan, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take all necessary and appropriate action to establish and to maintain in accordance with the provision of Chapter 164 of the general laws and in accordance with the rules, regulation, and orders of the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, a municipal lighting plan for all purposes allowable under the laws of the Commonwealth, including without limitation the operation of a telecommunications system and any related services, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote by secret ballot to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take appropriate action to establish and to maintain in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 164 of the general laws and in accordance with the rules, regulations, and orders of the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Telecommunications and Cable, a municipal light plan for all purposes allowable under the laws of the Commonwealth, including without limitation the operation of a telecommunications system and any related services.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any question or discussion? We have a question. Craig, you want to come back to that? You're probably, you're going to field these.
Will you explain what this is a little bit more depth?
So we're pretty much looking to establish the need to help residents with their cable and internet services. By voting on this, it's the first step in like an awkward term of an MLP. There's really no oversight person other than the Board of Selectmen would probably be the oversight on this one. But we're trying to create an option to charter spectrum for our internet services, reduce the bills for our residents in town. So this is the first step in establishing grant funding, community compact grants, whatever we can do to pay for it with state funding.
And there is no physical plan?
There is no physical plan, no. It's just a title. That's it.
So the company that you would partner with, like you said, maybe charter or spectrum?
No, we wouldn't partner with anybody. We would look into establishing our own broadband service in town, and it needs to go through town meeting twice. So this one, and then the ATM, which would where we would vote on the actual rule.
So is there fiber optics that are involved?
It would be a fiber optic internet service, yeah. It's, this gives us the leg up to go to the state so we can do the studies and the feasibility reports and see what the benefits would be.
And if it passes, it's the plan for more fiber optic throughout the town?
If it passes, it would give us the opportunity to do that. This isn't a vote to install fiber optics, it's a...
This is the first of...
Yeah, it gives us the leeway to be able to do this.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Okay, so this is the secret ballot. So if I could ask Mr. Patullo and Mr. Shares to come forward, and we're going to do this as we set us up just a minute ago. We've got to work on social distancing. I think it'll go pretty quickly. If you would, we would start with the front row, and then work over to the ballot, and then back to your chairs, and then the next row, and so on. So what you're going to do is you're going to present, you'll have your voter card and the perforated sheet, your actual vote, and you'll see there's a ballot box, the actual vote goes in the ballot box, and then the unused goes in the discard box. You're under no obligation to vote, but you'll use your card and the sheet. So when you're ready, Cliff, if you could go first. Well, y'all, go in line, go in line. You'd think I did that to somebody. Apparently, if you sit at the higher table, you get to go first. It's like Thanksgiving. We could, well, let's start the second, Judge. Go ahead. And then just circle back to your row. The third row, could start on that? Folks in the fourth row, please. Folks in the fifth row. Sixth row, please. Seventh row, please. And the folks in the last row, if you want to walk down. Okay, so we're going to, here's what's going to happen. We're going to continue on with the meeting, and Messrs. Patullo and Shares are going to count the vote. They'll do the yeses, the nos, give us the total, and then we'll let you know when we've made the two-thirds. But as I said, in the meantime, in the interest of brevity, we're going to continue on with the meeting, because like me, they, well, actually, Dick went to a Hampton school like me, so math is suspect. All right, Article number three, to see if, to see if the town will vote to reduce the Hampton police budget as follows. You have a motion?
Yeah, Wizard is out.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following appropriations, the Hampton police budget reduced as follows. Line item 01210511002, salaries from $1,217,274 to $1,437,333. Line item 01210519008, training from $33,100 to $14,000 to $46,373. Line item 01210542007, general expenses from $104,405 to $101,605. And further, the following appropriations increased as follows. Line item 01210511004, career incentive from $74,907 to $83,307. And line item 01210524012, equipment from $8,700 to $9,690. So the Hampton police budget for fiscal 2022 reflects a net reduction of $174,313.
That motion has been made. Do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
This requires a majority vote for the reduction to the budget. All those in favor. I'm actually sorry. Thank you very much, Cliff. Discussion. Does anyone have any questions on this? Rita, please.
I understood done to say numbers than are what I'm reading here. Whereas if there are seven...
The numbers themselves may be different, but they, but the actual number they're voting is some total number. So they are reducing each line, but the final motion is based on the total reduction, which I note on the screen is different by $2.
I was trying to follow, I didn't see the numbers, what I think he was saying, but
Rita, the warrant, the warrant was published before the contract numbers were changed. We signed the contract tonight, and that's why the numbers are a little bit different. Three of the contract was the police.
Okay, so is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the reduction? Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Article Four, match for small bridge program, to see if the town will... We will do that now, since you took such diligent, diligent effort to count them. The votes were 59 in favor, three opposed, the motion gains the necessary two-thirds. Article Two passes. Article Three is done. Article Four, oh, by the way, thank you, both Norman and Derek. Article Four, match for small bridge program, to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to fund the town share for the East Main Street Culvert replacement grant, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $30,000 from unappropriate available funds to provide the required match for a $34,000 state grant to design a replacement culvert and bridge in the East Main Street.
Got a motion, we've got a second. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any questions or discussion on the motion? I see a question.
Here, hand scan and grow. What is saying, bridge and culvert, the both on East Main Street, we want?
Right, the one, Peter, the one by the Audubon Society?
Oh, that's a bridge, not a culvert.
Well, there's a culvert underneath it, the opening on the bridge there, and the state gave us a 40, the municipal vulnerability.
Okay, so you're set with the location explanation? Any other questions, any other discussion? All those in favor, are there any opposed? The motion carries. Article Five, conservation, now this is a conservation restriction for the solar project at the landfill, to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to place a conservation restriction on an approximately one and a half acre parcel identified on the town of Hampton's assessor map as parcel 36-33, and approximately 7.59 acre parcel identified on the town of Hampton's assessor map as parcel 19-63, and an approximately 9.69 acre parcel identified on the town Hampton assessor's map as parcel 19-85. All as more fully shown on the attached exhibit and totaling approximately 18.7 acres in the aggregate. All currently town-owned land with said conservation restriction to be held by the Minutawatt Land Trust in perpetuity in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 184, Section 31, for rare species mitigation pursuant to a state regulatory permit or take any other action relative thereto. Motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to place a conservation restriction on approximately 18.78 acres of town-owned land, as fully shown on the attached exhibit A. Said conservation restriction to be held by the Minutawatt Land Trust in perpetuity in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 184, Section 31, for rare species mitigation pursuant to a state regulatory permit.
There's a motion, there's a second. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Are there any questions or any discussion on the motion? Yeah, why don't, Jack, why don't we do this? Because it is a little complicated, this one. Why don't we have John give a little overview, and then we'll go, okay?
Basically, you see this article and then the Article Six right after. As many of you are aware, we've been exploring solar at the town landfill the past few years. We're coming down to the finish line, but one of the items that came up during the process, we want to thank the Conservation Commission for their help in this, is that there is a offset required because of the endangered species, because of migratory turtles, all of that. This allows then the option, the option for the selectmen to find a way to put somebody in charge of the offset land that is being used for the solar field with other land that will be set aside, guaranteed not to be disturbed for the species. And I'm going to look to Conservation Board, one of the components, Steve, did I summarize that correctly? Perfect. All right, I'll go back to John now. So, quickly, we have two motions here. Only one is going to be effective. Either the oversight will be with Minutawatt Land Trust, or it'll be the Conservation Commission. Basically, you're authorizing the Board of Selectmen to start the process for one or the other to be in charge. So there's no money involved, there's no action being taken by the action of town meeting tonight other than authorizing the Board to go ahead and begin.
Question?
Yes. So my question is that, so either way, Article Five or Article Six, if they're voted favorably, either one, the responsibility then lies with the select for to pick, whether it's going to be Minutawatt Land Trust or it's going to be Conservation Commission. Is that correct?
Correct. Both questions are authorization questions, which give the Board of Selectmen an option to take an action. They could take neither, but it gives them the option, arrows in the quiver, if you will, as to how to deal with the issue on the table.
If one, if you vote positive on both, we're only going to execute one of them.
Okay? Is there any other questions? This is going to require a majority vote? You, you only need the yellow. That was for the secret ballot, Peter. All right, all questions being answered. All those in favor, any opposed? The motion carries. Article Six, to see if the, again, this is an authorization question similar to the last one, that gives an option to the Board. To see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to transfer an approximately one and a half acre parcel as identified on the town of Assessor, Hampton assessor's map as parcel 36-33, and approximately 7.59 acre parcel identified on the town of Hampton's assessor's map as parcel 19-63, and an approximately 9.69 acre portion of a parcel as identified in the town of Hampton assessor's map as parcel 19-85. All as more fully shown on the attached exhibit and totaling approximately 18.78 acres in the aggregate. All currently town-owned land to the custody and control of the Conservation Commission in perpetuity in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15A, for rare species mitigation pursuant to a state regulatory permit or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to transfer approximately 18.78 acres in the aggregate of town-owned land, as fully shown on the attached exhibit A, to the custody and control of the Conservation Commission in perpetuity in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15A, for rare species mitigation pursuant to a state regulatory permit.
So we've got a motion, we've got a second. This is the second option or second or the alternative to which the Board has for doing the necessary regulatory requirement. Does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any question or discussion on this one? I think you're good. All, this is another majority vote, all those in favor. Are there any opposed? The motion carries. I find it interesting that the total acreage of 18.78 is actually the same year as the town ham's birthday, 1878. Look at that. I thought I wasn't paying attention when I was sitting here. Article Seven, assessor's department classification change, to see if the town will vote to raise, raise, appropriate, or transfer from unappropriated available funds, a sum of money to place in the principal assessor, to place the principal assessor on the step scale at grade five, grade six, step eight, there's too many of these hyphens, or take any other action relative thereto.
No, I'm sure I was by 23 Main Street. Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to raise, appropriate, or transfer from unavailable, excuse me, unappropriated available funds, a sum of money to place the principal assessor at step, grade six, step eight on the scale, which is an amount of $2,372.
All right, could everybody hear that? I want to make sure that you heard the motion. I know the town clerk did, but can everybody hear it? Okay, so the motion is to transfer to, on my notes, it's $2,364. Is that the correct number? Okay, yes. So you have a motion to do the transfer based on the change in stepping rate. Is there a second to that motion? You have a second? Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Are there any questions or discussion on the change? There are none. Seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, are there any opposed? The motion carries. Article Eight, Building Department, classification change, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds, a sum of money to upgrade the administrative person in the building department from a grade three, step two, department assistant, to a grade four, step two administrative assistant slash building, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from unappropriated available funds, a sum of money to upgrade the administrative person in the building department from a un, unappropriated available funds, a sum of thirty-eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars to upgrade the administrative person in the building department from a grade three, step two department assistant to grade four, step two administrative assistant building.
Got a motion, you've got a second. Bob, could you just change this to Article eight, just so folks who are reading it can, can see it? Motion, second, advisory committee recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Any question or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Article nine, community preservation committee article. To see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from the community preservation annual revenues in the amount recommended by the community preservation committee for the following community preservation project for fiscal two thousand twenty-two. There is one, a request from the Hampton Historical Commission for nine thousand three hundred dollars to hire a consultant to prepare and apply for an historic register listing or take any other action relative thereto. You want to do it from there, Doug?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer nine thousand three hundred dollars to the Hampton Historical Commission to hire a consultant to prepare and submit a historic register listing for properties as shown on the attached exhibit A.
We have a motion, we have a second. We've got a second. Does the advisory committee itself have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Are there any questions or discussion on this? I see one.
Mike, the thing was, A Street. Didn't we go on this earlier than the last meeting we had? You think there's general consensus that, well, you're reflecting an awful lot of people here, you can't represent your diligence and ask them whether they're willing to do this. Because according to this, you're going to be not only hiring consultants, but you're also preparing or applying for a list. So that is an action that you did.
And before the question is answered, I'm going to look to see if there's somebody here to answer it. From, from a moderator's point, I was going to make that clear, that you are voting, in essence, as double action here. It is not only to raise the money to hire a consultant, but it is also as stated and applied for a national, national register of historic places. So to me, if I'm interpreting the question as per the motion, you're right, Mike, and I was going to note that it is a double action, it's money and application. So it's, my understanding is it's not as if we're coming back here for further discussion. So point is well taken. Is there anybody who would be willing to address?
Hi, my name is Christina Rubus, I'm a member of the Hampton Historical Commission. Um, to your point, uh, we have a hundred and ten properties in the proposed district. Uh, we did a mailing over the summer to all a hundred and ten individuals. We provided them not only a detailed proposal of what we wanted to do, a lot of the map of the proposed district. Uh, we also provided a brochure on what a national registered district really involves, uh, which ultimately has no, uh, provides the individual who owns the property to make any changes or anything that they would like to do. It's very different than a historic district, which provides all of those. It gives all of those, uh, restrictions on what an individual can do to their home or their property. This is not that. Um, we are hoping that, uh, tonight we'll be able to pass this, but ultimately, what we did was we mailed to all those individuals. We also had a forum for folks that could come and ask questions. We had the consultant come in that would be preparing and applying for this, and she answered as many questions as she could um, in regards to what people had additional questions for.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Moderator, I have the pressing process. You have a hundred and ten people there being, like, how many people here today? So we have the minority people. Dictate the majority of people, but we did. I find that offensive. So until we go to a larger audience, I don't think it's fair or something for us to dictate to a group of larger people.
We are not dictating.
And if we're going to do this, then they did a single action. Hire a consultant, it's all been listening.
All right, let's, let's do, hold on, before you go, Connie, there's, right back. And could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Carol Powell, my name, I will be in this, in this district. And I think the fact that those brochures and questionnaires were sent out, everyone knew about this. And either they're not here because they figured that it wasn't a huge issue because it doesn't limit what you can do in your home, well, probably. And so I guess I wouldn't.
Nope, you, you absolutely have the right to disagree with each other, as long as we keep it, and you're doing great. Now, hold on, before you go, Peter, Connie.
We sent out the mailing with a self-addressed stamped postcard asking if people were in favor, opposed, or undecided. Seventy-six percent of the respondents, seventy-six percent said they were in favor. And we also held a forum which had about twenty-two people in the audience. And there was only basically one objection, and that was that someone had been told by their insurance company that they would have to pay more insurance, but the agent did not understand that this was not a local historic district. It's a national registered historic district. It has absolutely no authority to tell you anything that you can do with your home.
Okay, now, Connie, hold up, Peter, hold on, Mike, before you go, we got Peter, then Jack, and then we go Mike, so Peter, you're first.
And if there's no, sorry, Peter has, if there's no reason in this pure property whatsoever, what is it going to benefit the town for? So if that case, like, we spend money.
Well, sometimes we like a little pat on the back. And that's basically what it is, it's recognition for something that we have, that we've been able to keep for well over a hundred or fifty years, some of our homes are even two hundred years old. And it's recognition for that. And there are over nine hundred historic districts in state national registered historic districts in the state of Massachusetts alone. And we don't have one. That's like two and a half national registered districts for every other town and city in the entire state. We don't have one, does that mean we're not important? Does that mean you don't have history or buildings that are worth preserving? I don't think so.
Jack?
If we've never had a question before, I.
Actually, my question was answered.
You're good? Jack?
John Matthews. Um, I guess my question is, is that why would we keep going? Okay, wouldn't it be better served? And I, I don't know, Connie, the question is to you is can people opt out of this? You, you've got a list of houses, you know, that are, I think you'd want to include in the registries. Would it be more advantageous to vote the money, do the study, and then ask those people if they'd like to be included in that registry? And I, I, like you say, I don't know the background, so if you could, you know, kind of fill me in a little bit on.
Since, since it doesn't have any regulations, there really isn't any reason to be exploited.
Is that, okay, now, before we, okay. This is Bob, you're up.
Um, I have a few things.
Please.
Could I first, you know, the question to Doug Boyd about the money for this, because I thought.
It's community preservation, yes.
Can I understand more like that the money to do this would be coming from the community preservation fund, which already has a sum of money in it to do these things?
That's correct, this money is already raised and appropriated. This, this money is already raised and appropriated, it's been in the bank.
It's the money that we pay annually in from conservation.
Yes, we've got, we've got something like four hundred thousand dollars plus in that account.
Yep. And you had a second part.
I have a second point, but I get. So what I'm saying is this is not technically possible, I should have to raise any.
This is not, there are no new taxes as a result of this question, this is coming from existing funds. You are correct. Yep, you got it.
And my second point is, I have repeatedly been opposed to proposals that the historical commission has had before this group over many years. Um, I am, and my husband and I are both of the sessions house and the session farm, which is on this list. I feel that the, uh, this designation is something that is not invasive, it doesn't prohibit us from doing anything to our property. We can air it out in the park, make it out, we can do whatever we want. What we're doing is making pride in the people who live in our houses and establish this town. And, but maybe people don't think the history of this town is important, but think about where it would be but for these people who fought for this town, settled this town, farmed this town, moved this town. And I think those, uh, important people in this district's town need to have acknowledgement from others besides me.
I seen it, Mike.
Wouldn't it be possible to make a motion with this, so that there is the ability for them to do whatever they have to do, then at the tail end, be totally voluntary, once they get all their proof, they get registered. So it's totally voluntary at that point, we're just not automatically putting it to the pool. I don't enjoy the pool that we throw.
So what would be. Okay, so what would be required was you would make a motion to amend the motion. And we would have to vote on your request to amend it first. If your request to amend it passes, then we'll, you'll make the motion, get the second, have discussion on it, and then we'll vote on that motion.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to do that.
So what we have here, um, Connie, could you bring that back? Just because I want to make sure someone can hear this. I think they can. So what we have is we have a request for, in essence, a substitute motion. What has to happen first is we have to have a motion to amend the motion. Am I right, I'm still right, Robert? Okay, we have to have a motion to amend the motion. If it is voted favorably to amend the motion, then the actual motion will be made, which will be the motion to split this into two. And then we will vote on that. So what we need first is we have a motion to amend the current motion, does it have a second?
Second.
It does have a second. So we've got a motion and a second, so now what we're going to be voting on next is a motion to amend the motion that you've already heard. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation on this motion?
What's the wording?
Wait, don't we have to do the motion to amend a motion first? It's just going to have a motion, all right, my mistake. All right, so what we're going to need now, Mike, is we're, we're going to need your new motion, I'm sorry.
My motion is to hire a consultant for nine thousand three hundred dollars to bear, apply, or restore registration for those properties. With the, yeah, the, those properties will have the option of, option in, rather than just being listed automatically. Does that make sense? Or is that too complex?
My, my sense of this, and it's your motion, so I believe you could do it any way that you want it. My sense of it, it would be cleaner if you made the motion simply to approve the funding for the study.
But let's just do that, yes.
That's my sense of it, I don't want to, okay?
And that's my.
All right, so now what we have is a motion. Yes, sir.
Well, how about if we just deleted the words and submit?
Right. That'll run.
That'll work for him too, but it's still a motion change, so.
I understand that, but to simplify what he's asking, just, it, it, that doesn't work. Just the, the, his motion would be to delete the words and submit. Correct.
Okay. Does that make sense to you? All right, nope, Dick, thank you very much, and that makes it cleaner. It's really great that I have two sets of training wheels here at these meetings. So the motion is now made simply for, the motion is out there in, in, to make it simple for all of us, including me, is that this is a motion to approve the ninety-three hundred dollars. Um, the actual eliminates the wording and submit. Is there a second to that motion? There is a second from John Matthews. All those in favor? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends negative action on the change.
Okay, advisory is now recommending negative action on the change, is there any discussion on the change? Connie? Figured you'd want this back.
There doesn't seem to be much use in spending nine thousand three hundred dollars, even if we already have it available to spend when you're not going to do anything with it. What we would have with nine thousand three hundred dollars is a consultant's work, which would sit in our file cabinet and be used maybe two or three or four or five times a year by individuals doing research with, with materials that we have within the historical commission. It just doesn't make sense.
Question?
I'm Dawn Brice, I'm a senior. I think because, is there a way for people who don't want to have their listing for their houses to opt out of this? So if you're paying the ninety-three hundred dollars, but you don't want to be bought? Isn't there a way for people who do want this to go through, and people who don't actually have the same ability? I mean, it's not as if they're really, if this town doesn't want to have it, it's going to stay, does it impact anything?
No, it just, it just doesn't impact you at all.
Hold on, hold on, Connie, it's not through, it's not through, because I want to keep track of this. Um, next, Mary Ellen, but John first.
Um, I'm looking through the list, okay? And, you know, you got Hampton Audubon, uh, Mark Casey's house, Whiteford Apartments, you know, all notable things, Country Auto, McMar, you know, all notable things, but are they really historic? I, I understand you want to have a district and it's, those are, would be in the district. But again, are they notable through the historic district? That's why, that's my thing is just that I'd like to see it split up. No problem with the money, Connie, and actually, you know, we could purge this list and, you know, if you go around those areas, you know, I mean, how historic? Those are, those are mine. So when somebody comes through town and sees Country Auto as a, it's a historic, well, it can be, I mean, we can relate it back to, maybe there was some issues that were done there, but again, um, those are some issues that I have.
All right. Mary Ellen?
Well, I want to compliment you on bringing the woman from the state in for the meeting that we had, where she explained to some twenty-five people, uh, how this whole process works, and I thought it was very informative and very helpful. Um, my understanding was that you were establishing a district with parameters, okay? If anybody in that district doesn't want to be, it's just the district. You want to put a plaque on your house saying you're part of a historic district? You can do that, you don't, you don't do anything, you just continue to live the way you've already lived. And she said there are no restrictions on a house, you can paint the purple if you wanted to, you can dim the lights in the yard, you can do anything you wanted to your house, and didn't infringe on your personal rights whatsoever. And she was, she was very helpful in understanding the thing and alleviating, I thought, some of the concerns that people had, because when you hear the historic district, you say, oh, my goodness, you know, there are, it's only going to happen, and it wasn't that way at all.
All right, let's, we'll stop that one there. Carol, last one.
Okay, um, as I remember, one of the was a, uh, a thing about, uh, business type thing, I can't remember, that they could get funds from the state for certain improvements or changes.
There are tax credits available for any business, uh, that would be historic, and, and this kind of goes to what uh, John Matthews just said, uh, there are buildings.
There are buildings within a district, and a district is an area like this. And, and there's infill in that district, and those buildings are listed as contemporary. Fifty years from now, they may be historic. Right now, they're just contemporary. But say the owner of Casabella wanted to restore that building to what it looked like a hundred, a hundred years ago, or to the, the period when it was, had to store. That building could receive a twenty-five percent tax credit from the federal government and twenty-five percent tax credit from the state for any historic restoration work that they did on that building. And many developers use this. Some developers won't even buy a building unless it's on the national register because of the top, the tax credits. It also gives the town of Hampden the opportunity to apply for a Massachusetts Preservation Projects Fund grant, which we cannot apply for now, because we do not have a national registered district. But we do have buildings and areas within that district, being the townhouse, Academy Hall, Old Cemetery, Prospect Hill Cemetery, all those buildings and the town tree, and probably something else that I've forgotten, would be available for this, for this grant.
So let's hold that question there. I was going to end it, but one of the selection has a question, so let's take that and then we'll.
So basically, back to, if I can address Mike. Mike, your concern is that something being done by everybody, being vetting and being honest. I say the same thing I've mentioned to the committee before. This is a great, great opportunity for the town. But I live in my fifth house in town. This one's the newest, eighteen, nineteen eighty-five. And I didn't feel a grocery on the red slip. I think your plan is good, that we develop the list, hire this guy, but don't turn it in until everybody has had a chance to go through and take it back and say, okay, we went through a hundred and ten properties, and nineteen people would not like a piece of it with their name on it. And that would be done maybe at the annual town meeting next year. Let's get the process started, hire the guy, get him started, but have the last closure next year. That's my goal.
All right, so we're clear, the motion, and you can feel free to jump in if I get this wrong. The motion that you're voting on is to authorize the expenditure, but not the submission of the package for approval. So. Well, that's what I wanted to first. Okay, all right. This is bouncing a little bit. So what we have to do now is you've heard the motion. We have to vote on the motion to amend, meaning are you in favor of the motion made? And that's going to require a majority vote. So all.
Bringing the word and submit.
Yes, striking the words and submit. Is everybody clear on what we're voting now? Okay, this is going to require a majority vote. So all those in favor of amending the motion, please raise your cards. Those oppose, oh, sorry, let me do this one more time. Okay, those opposed to amending the motion. So the follow-up motion fails. Now, we are going to go back and vote the original motion as submitted. And that motion will include the funding. So I'm going to read that motion one more time as it appears here. Move that the town vote to transfer ninety-three hundred dollars to the Hampden Historical Commission to hire a consultant to prepare and submit the historic register listing for the properties as shown on the attached exhibit. That is your motion made, seconded, and discussed. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor. All those opposed. I feel like we should count this. Dick, can you, can you? What? Let's see it again, you know, I'm, I'm, I want to be, it's not that, it's not as rough as you think from what I can see. All those in favor. That's better. All those opposed? Now it's clearer. Motion carries. Sometimes you got to see it from my perspective. All right, we are now on Article Ten, a library classification change. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to upgrade the youth services children's librarian position from a grade three step three to a grade four step three, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have somebody from the library to make a motion? Please.
Move that the town vote to transfer three thousand five hundred twenty dollars from unappropriated available funds to upgrade the youth services children's librarian position from a grade three step three to a grade four step three.
Is there a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Does advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any question or discussion on this? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm not opposed to this. I, I just wanted to just clarify here. So the town's going to vote to change the grade?
Move that the town vote to, it just says the town vote to transfer three thousand five hundred twenty dollars. So it's.
Right, but like in his case, he's had money put in, so should the grade change be approved, the money's available?
All right, so.
The grade change, it was already approved?
Okay, so it's already approved.
Rick?
I'm sorry, Carol, please.
So this one was approved right before annual town meeting, but it was minutes before the meeting that the advisory got the information. So we asked the library to delay until special town meeting. So it was prior, it had been approved. We had, by Collins, we asked them to wait. Just, it was just a timing issue. It would have changed all of our members in annual town.
Yeah, no, I just listened to it. Thank you.
All right, so you've got the background?
Yes.
Okay, so this require, any other questions? Are we good? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor. Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to purchase a new pickup truck for the Hampden Highway Department, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer forty-three thousand dollars from unappropriated available funds to the highway department to purchase a pickup truck.
Is that a second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Are there any questions or discussion on the motion?
Rick, I do want to make a point that even though selection were best, like the highway department who are the chiefs, we are against the.
So we're not going for a vehicle change. Mark's not even laughing, so I'm thinking. All right, motion, second. All discussion. All those in favor. Are there any opposed? That just means they have to get to know their selection better. That's not true. The motion carries. Article twelve, reduction of the Hampden Wolverhampton Regional School District Assessment for fiscal two thousand twenty-two. To see if the town will vote to reduce the assessments, the town of Hampden, from the Hampden Wolverhampton Regional School District in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, subsection sixteen B and a half, as amended, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the reduction of eighty-six thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars, the assessments from the Hampden Wolverhampton Regional School District in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, section sixteen B and a half, as amended.
Here we go, you have a motion, you have a second. Second, we have a second. Advisory Committee.
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Are there any questions or discussion on the motion? A motion to reduce the budget requires a majority vote. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to point out that Aaron Osborne, the financial director of the Hampden Wolverhampton Regional School District, was very helpful in this. They didn't have to file the paperwork until December first, but he did it over the summer so that they could make it to our annual town meeting to get this reduction.
Article thirteen, short-term debt. To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to reduce outstanding short-term debt, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mister Moderator, I move the town to transfer three hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars from unappropriated available funds to reduce the outstanding short-term debt.
Second, the motion's second. Advisory?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Are there any questions to the treasurer or any discussion? Seeing none, this is a majority vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Article fourteen, reducing the tax rate. To see if the town will vote to transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money for the purpose of reducing the tax rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, or two thousand twenty-two, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town transfer two hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars from unappropriated available funds for the purpose of reducing the tax rate for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
Motion, you have a second? It's got a second. Do you folks have a recommendation on your own motion?
We do. We recommend favorable action.
Do you have any discussion to offer, or just, or any questions of the advisory committee? I see a question. Peter?
Yeah, the summary says three hundred and ten thousand. Or did the offset from the school, the offset is changed?
Okay, so being told by the selectmen, it's the offset from the school savings. Is that the difference?
That's, that's the difference, yes.
Okay. Nope, so, so you're set, Carol. Are there, thank you, Peter. Are there any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? It's a majority vote and it passes. Article fifteen, transfer to the general stabilization account. To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money, money from unappropriated available funds into the general stabilization account, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mister Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer three hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars from unappropriated available funds into the general stabilization account.
We have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. You have folks have your recommendation?
We recommend favorable action. This number is likely different, and this is because of the school number as well.
All right, this also requires a majority vote, transferring money in. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? With no further business before this town meeting, I will request a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor? Go watch the game.